Good evening and welcome to the January 12, 2023, meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend James Webb of St. Violet Baptist Church. As part of this weekend's MLK events, Reverend Webb will be the featured speaker for the humanitarian celebration on Saturday at Parkview Baptist Church. He is a pastor, author, and board of trustee, chairman at ETBU. Most importantly, he says he is blessed to be married to his wife Sharon Laverne and the proud father of two graduates from LISD Donovan James and Carmen LaJoyce. Please rise Reverend Webb.
Let us pray. Most holy and wise God, how grateful we are for this day. Lord, we recognize that you are Alpha and Omega. We recognize that you are the beginning and the end. Lord, your word declares that to be anxious for nothing but in all things through prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, let your requests be made known unto God. So, Lord, we're asking you today to bring, allow wisdom to reign in this council chamber. Lord, we thank you for the gift of our men and women who are serving this community. Lord, we thank you for the blessings of that you have bestowed upon Longview. We thank you for all of the peace that you've allowed to abide within this place. Lord, we just ask that those who will come today will do those things that are decent and in order that you might be glorified. Lord, we just ask you to usher us into your presence and allow your spirit and your wisdom to reign. It is in the name of Jesus the Christ that we pray. Thank God and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Webb. Could I ask you to please remain standing? I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Longview Police Officer Larry Solomon, who passed away on Saturday after battle with cancer. Larry dedicated his life to service and family. He was a veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps and proudly served the Longview community for almost eight years as a police officer. Larry was a proud husband and father of two beautiful children. Please join me in a moment of silence for Officer Solomon. You may be seated. For now, the citizen comment, I do have a couple of speaker cards that will be addressed during zoning. We will now go to our public safety update. Chief Boone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. First, I want to cover our December stats from last month on our priority one calls. These are, again, like our in-progress calls. We averaged four minutes and six seconds on our response time to those. Our calls for service last month were 5,285, with our traffic stops just under 2,000, and our DWI cases were 32, and our crashes were 199. So, to give you an idea what that looks like for 2022, our average throughout the year was four minutes and 10 seconds on our response time for priority one calls, which is well below our five-minute standard. Our calls for service were just over 63,000 for the year, traffic stops just over 25,000 for the year, and our DWI is at 331, so close to almost one per day, and our crash total was 2,316, down almost 200 from last year. So, I am proud to see our crash numbers going down. I also want to thank McCoy's Building Supply. They donated a pallet, or actually a couple pallets of water to us last month, and they also gave us these neat devices. So, you'll always see our officers out wearing vests. These vests actually have the two LED panels in them, and you can see them from afar. So, they are really cool, and we got 10 of those, and we definitely appreciate that extra piece of safety equipment. Today, we had leadership Longview sponsored by the Chamber that came through the PD, and we were able to spend about two hours with them showing different things that we do at the police department and sharing some stats with them and some different tools that we use to get the job done, and I think they had a real good time with that. Of course, they always love getting to meet our K-19 team. Finally, I do want to thank you, Mayor, for that moment of silence and just remind everybody that this evening is the visitation for Larry, his family, and the service will be tomorrow at 11 o'clock. And again, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. Thanks for the opportunity to provide you an update since we met last month. And I do need to circle back with my first slide to last month. As you're aware, we held our annual fire department toy drive at the Longview Mall on the 10th, and it was a success. As usual, this community always rallies and supports anytime there's an opportunity like that to invest and help where help is needed in this community, and I certainly want to reach out to them and say thank you that those toys were all put to good use and in the hands of kids that might have went without otherwise. So, thanks, thanks, Longview, for supporting the fire department and our annual toy drive once again. We had the opportunity last week to do a partnership with the Marshall Fire Department and the Kilgore Fire Department to bring some training to town that's kind of unique for the fire service and the emergency response world for mental health and PTSD. In the fire service, I can tell you that mental health and PTSD, along with firefighter cancer, are two of the emerging threats to the firefighter community, not just in Texas, but across the country, and so we're trying to address those as the opportunity presents. So, this armed our firefighters with some awareness level training of knowing when those moments might be approaching them, when the PTSD might begin to be weighing on them, and just how to look out better for one another, and also to train our supervisors on how to also be on the lookout for the little alarms and triggers that they may pick up on in the fire station when somebody may be struggling with some form of PTSD following a serious or dramatic top call. So, it's always great that we can partner with our neighboring agencies here in the East Texas area to provide very worthwhile and needed training for our personnel. So, again, I'd like to thank Chief Henderson there on the left and Chief Cooper there on the right in the picture for collaborating with me on this and making this training happen here locally. So, I might need some help with this. So, over this past weekend, we had one of our battalions, Travis Pickle, was doing a reading event at the Longview Public Library, and in the middle of the reading event, he met this young lady named Naomi that her family says she's kind of at a crossroads in her life. She doesn't know if she wants to be a firefighter or apprentice. So, we took advantage of this opportunity to really sell her on the Longview Fire Department, and lo and behold, she's already well-equipped with her own set of pink turnout gear, which is a plus for us. So, if you know this young lady or you go to church with her, see her in the community, if you can help me over about the next 17 to 18 years to keep her focused on coming to work for the Longview Fire Department, I would sure appreciate it. We'd love to have her on board someday. And the guys at Station Two, where she went out and did her station tour after that library visit, they said she was a hoot. She was all-in on everything and asked a ton of questions, and they just had a great time visiting with her and her family. So, it's great to see that, that type of activity and that type of interest in the community even at that young age. So, it was just one of those heart things I wanted to share with you tonight. Yesterday, we had our biennial compliance inspection from the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. As I'm sure you're aware, we're regulated by two state governing agencies, the Texas Department of State Health Services for the medical aspect that we provide, and the Texas Commission on Fire Protection for our certified firefighting staff. So, they come in every two years, and they kind of comb through all of our records to make sure that we're doing everything that we're supposed to do by the standards that are set forth in state statute. We passed that inspection with no blemishes, no marks, and they were very impressed by some of the ways that we're doing our record-keeping and keeping things on track, moving the fire department forward. So, that's always a relief for me to see us get past one of those inspections. So, appreciate the time that they spent here with us and the people that helped make that possible. Our staff really does a great job of following the rules and making sure that we're prepared for these types of inspections when they come around. And the next thing I'll talk about is our annual railroad tank car safety course. We're currently in the planning for that, and I'm kind of putting this out there for the emergency response community that if you have firefighters or especially hazardous materials technicians that are interested, we're putting this course together. Registration will be opening soon. There's been a hiatus on this really since COVID. We haven't done it in about three years, so we're trying to get this ramp back up. We have great local community partners with Eastman Chemical, Union Pacific Railroad, BNSF Railroad, a lot of other agencies here in the area that help us pull this off, and it's one of only a few of these types of courses that are available nationwide, and we're happy to bring that here to Longview and to bring that training to our local emergency response force. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're not a consent agenda. Any items council like to pull off for separate discussion?
C, G, and K.
Say that again, please.
C, G, and K.
C, G, and K. M? Hold on just a second. Let me label these. M? Okay, what else?
I.
I. Okay, we'll just start with C.
Yes, sir. I got to looking at this and looking at it on my agenda and everything. This wasn't our budget, right?
Yes, it is.
And we're, the city's paying for this, not the state.
It is. This is just the agreement with text, not to say, hey, we're going to put that signal in at that intersection, and we're going to use your right of way to do it.
Okay, so it was in this year's budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Next is G.
Yes, sir.
I brought this up because I think this is very, very important for the fire department, and I want, I wanted Chief Stillman to get up and tell us a little bit about what this was about and what it means to the firemen here.
Sure. So, item G is how, it's allowing us to piggyback on to a cooperative purchasing contract that's based in the metroplex through the North Central Texas Council of Government, and what it will do is allow us to reach out further for obtaining the fire, the uniforms that we wear that are fire retardant rated. They meet a certain National Fire Protection Association standard as another layer of protection for our firefighters as they go inside structured fires and are around those types of hazardous environments. One of the issues that we've had about the last two years is getting certain sizes of the materials for that make these uniforms up. So, what this is going to allow us to do is to broaden our reach and to maybe hit some other vendors that maybe we haven't had exposure to before to try and fill in some of those gaps. We hired 15 guys in the last couple of months, and we're having to start them out in jeans and a T-shirt because we can't put them in the proper uniform. So, we're trying to broaden our perspective so that we can maybe find ways to fill those voids.
Can you go to, explain a little bit about the cost of what you talked to me about?
So, yeah, on an annual basis, we spend about $92,000 on uniform maintenance for our firefighters. Every firefighter, when they hire one from day one, they're issued four sets of uniforms because you can imagine during the day, they're going to get a couple, they're going to get dirty a couple of times and have to wash and dry, and they've got to have something to wear in between. And then the $92,000 is kind of a maintenance process where every firefighter has $400 basically to spend on replenishing those uniforms throughout the years as they tear pants or they rip shirts or whatever happens when it becomes unreparable so that they can maintain that uniform standard that we have in the fire department. And from time to time, we have to come back to the budgeting process and ask for increases in this amount because naturally, like everything else, these materials don't get any cheaper. They only continue to get expensive like our other turnout gear and other things that are made with fire retardant materials.
So, are we allowing $400 per man per year right now?
Correct.
Do we need to go up on that?
Well, I think we're going to evaluate that in this coming budget. We talked about it last year. We thought we can make it one more year, but we may be bringing that back to the budget team as we get into the budget process of putting that together. Sure, that may be an item that we need to present.
Thank you.
And Chief, I'm sorry, that only includes the uniform, not the boots or whatever?
Yeah, well, now duty boots, like the black boots that I'm wearing are a part of, now, we don't start, we may not start you out with that, but you can buy that as you get fitted out with uniforms, and then let's say you don't need four sets, you only need two sets. Now, you might have enough money in your account to buy a pair of boots that'll get you by for three or four or five years until you need to replace those. Now, this is only uniforms. This doesn't have anything to do with the turnout gear. Even though it's all in the same account, the uniform portion of that is the $92,000.
So, the other gear, though, we help subsidize that, right?
It's all in the budget. Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, our total protective clothing allowance is around, is probably, I got it written down here, is $570,000 that's appropriated in our budget. This portion is only a small, a small fraction of that or a portion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, the regular uniform is probably? Good for a year if they don't tear it.
If they take care of it and they launder it the way that it's supposed to be, you know, we all follow those directions, right, and do the manufacturer's recommendation for laundering and washing and drying and doing all that, yeah, they can stretch a uniform out for a couple of years without any problem.
Now, how long does a set of turnout gear last?
Turnout, turnout gear has, has an actual life on it that we can't use it more than 10 years, and it all depends on how busy your department is. Realistically, now, I bet we're probably getting around six to seven years out of a set of turnout gear before it starts failing the test and we have to replace it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The everyday uniform that we're talking about here now, it is fire retardant, right?
Yes. So, you're wearing a fire retardant outer shell, and then even your interior stuff that's closer to your body protecting your skin is also fire retardant as well.
Okay, we'll move to I, Ms. Kimbo.
I have a question for you, Steve.
No, sir, this is not a time for.
I just heard there were 230 firefighters.
I'm sorry, sir, this, this is perfect. Thank you, sir.
Nice, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Good to see you. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ms. Laura. I was just wondering, is this, this additional grant funding, is this to cover the trail that was identified in that, in the parks?
Yes, ma'am, it is to help supplement the bond funds because we're trying to get all the park projects done, and this grant became available so we could, if we can fund the trail, then Mr. Karen has more money to do other things in the park to meet the bond needs.
So, other things in the park would be like those canopies or some other stuff?
That will be up to him if we can get this grant.
Okay.
If not, we need to build the trail and maybe look for other money for canopies or something.
Well, thank you for looking into it, and I appreciate you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. And Joe, didn't mean to cut you off. They'll answer your questions after the meeting's over, okay? Not a problem at all, sir. Thank you very much. We'll get your questions answered for you. Now, we're to K. Mr. Purtle.
Dwayne, I've been visiting with the fellows over on Fairmont. I think they're getting close to getting through. Is this final payment, is it everything that they're doing now to finish up?
No, this is the final payment on the relocation of the water in the sewer lines.
Oh, okay.
So, this is just that part of it. We haven't gotten to the point where we're doing final payment on the actual project itself.
Okay, well, those gentlemen told me that they're within a few weeks of finishing.
Yeah, they're getting close.
Other than the railing and stuff that are on the deep sides where the culverts and everything are at.
Yeah, there's a few items for them to finish up, and then we'll bring that back to you guys.
Are we going to start, are we going to start on Avenue B pretty quick here right after that because that's going to affect?
I'm not sure of timeline yet on that one.
Okay, because that's going to affect what's happening on Fairmont.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll have to get back with you on it on the timeline. I'll have to get back with you on the timeline for Avenue.
All right, thank you.
Now, the M, Ms. Notte.
Question for Chief Boone. Regarding the funds for the advocacy center, is this fund just strictly for kids that are in Gregg County, or how many counties do they provide?
The Child Advocacy Center actually serves three counties. They serve Gregg, Harrison, and Marion County, and, but Gregg County is about 52% of the end user for our Martin House CAC, and then Longview PD makes up probably about 40% of all their clients.
Thank you.
I have a question, Chief. Would you explain this to everybody up here, what's going on here, like you explained to me?
The Martin House Child Advocacy Center, actually, I've got some little cheat sheets on it so I don't mess it up, but basically, they partner with law enforcement and CPS to, they do the forensic interviews when you have child victims, child witnesses, and so what that does, it prevents that child from having to be spoken to over and over by different people, different entities. You get one interview, you get it one time, you get it by a professional that knows what they're doing so that they get to the truth. That way, we get justice for everybody that's involved in the case. And then from there on the backside, they actually have avenues to get help and referrals to those children for the other counseling and other needs that they may have from whatever traumatic event that they've been through. It's a, it's a great cause.
Originally, we've been paying, what, $10,000 a year?
Yes, sir, and for our amount of use.
We're way behind.
Their, their budget's probably close to $900,000 annually, and when you look at $10,000, when we're, just our, our city, our agency is 40% of the end user, you can see where that was a little off-kilter, so this gets it closer to where, where it should be.
Okay, thank you.
The other questions, are motion or consent agenda?
No motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the zoning, public hearing, held consider application S-22-11, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a private club in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for a restaurant allowing for the onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages in addition to beer and wine within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a trial of public hearing which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, held consider application S-22-12, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for existing one-family dwellings in heavy commercial zoning district. A specific use permit is required for one-family dwellings in heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Currently, there are several single-family dwelling districts scattered throughout this block. The applicant would like to bring this property into compliance with current zoning requirements. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a trial of public hearing which is now open. I have Ms. Catherine Davis here for questions if needed. Any questions, Ms. Davis or Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the public hearing, held consider application S-22-13, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a private club in general retail zoning district located along Toller Drive or Toller Road. A specific use permit is required for a restaurant to allow for onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages in addition to beer and wine within general retail zoning district. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a trial of public hearing which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, held consider application Z-22-30, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The city of Longview is requesting a rezone of property located along Neiman Marcus, Marcus Parkway east of Big Oak Boulevard. This property was annexed into the city limits last year by city council, so when annexation occurs, the property is automatically given an agricultural zoning designation. With the development that is occurring in the business park, staff is requesting that this property be zoned to light industrial, which is what the rest of the park is. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our comprehensive plan, future land use map. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a trial of public hearing which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Mr. Carpenter.
Can you show us the city limits lines?
Yes, sir. So, the city limit lines are in the red.
Okay, so those two tracks are not in the city, south of Neiman Marcus Parkway?
That is correct. Those are outside the city limits.
And Warren Street's outside the city.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Wade?
I move to, whenever you're ready.
Oh, neither of the questions. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Mr. Wade, motion is second? We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, held consider application Z-22-31, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately five acres along Spring Hill Road west of McCann Road. The applicant plans to develop this property into a townhome subdivision. The property currently is zoned multifamily. The applicant is requesting to rezone it to TH, which is town, zoning for townhomes. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a trial of public hearing which is now open. I have a speaker card from Jose Fajardo. Would you like to speak?
I believe he's the.
I want five acres.
Sir, please state your name and your address and then speak.
Jose Fajardo. I live on 202 Charlene Street, and we own five acres.
Yes, sir.
Next to the lady she was talking. And, and then the other side, there's some nice houses there, and I'm planning to build me a house there, me and my wife, and I talked to the gentleman next to me, he owns five acres also, and he's not happy with building a small houses there. I'm not happy either because I'm next to those five acres that they want to build those houses. So, I hope they don't build those houses. I mean, if they can build nice houses because the other side looks nice, if they build little house like that, it's not, it's just like having mobile homes there. So, I'm not happy with those. So, if they go and build those, I'll probably sell my property and go somewhere else. So, thank you for.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. The public hearing is still open. We have Joe Hart here from Johnson and Pace for questions if necessary. Any questions, Ms. Choi or Mr. Hart? If there are no questions, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Move to approve. There's a second? Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now to election items. Assistant ordinance calling an election on May the 6th, 2023 to fill the expired terms of council members for City Council Districts 3 and 4. Ms. Shepherd.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Mr. McPhee. Tonight, we have an ordinance that's going to be calling for an election to be held on May 6th, 2023. This election would be for Council Districts 3 and 4. Filing for these positions opens next Wednesday, which is the 17th, and will close on February 18th. Early voting will be April 24th through May 2nd, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Shepherd?
Move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
There's a second?
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. We look forward to our election. Now, items of community interest, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Expedition 2023 getting set up to go at Pine Tree this year. February the 16th, they're going to be at Maud Cobb from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening. It's a community event that will showcase all of the Pine Tree, will visit with students, will have teachers, administrators, pathways to success, some innovative projects they've been working on, extracurricular activities, special programs, and more. The best part of that this is we get to see some student demonstrations, not limited to, but also including fine art performances, and we'll also have a section where you can learn about volunteering and job opportunities with the district. This is a chance to discover what makes Pine Tree great, all in one location, and to be such a proud part of our city. Again, Thursday the 16th from 8:00 to 5, uh, 8, excuse me, 6:00 to 8:00 at the Maud Cobb Convention Center. East Texas Food Bank continuing the next distribution at Greckton on Pine Tree Road will be on January the 19th. Mayor, there are up to about 300 families per, per giveaway, and it's continuing to gain steam, and the people out in that community really do appreciate it. Food Bank Distribution, the one that the East Texas Food Bank and the city helps with will be this Friday, the 13th, at nine, from 9:00 to 10:30 over at the convention complex. And, Dwayne, I want to give you a special shout-out and thanks for all of the work on behalf of your team and all of the people involved, including public safety. We've had some, some pretty interesting water issues over the last few weeks, and I just really, it's good that, to know that you guys have it under control and that, that we get it taken care of. I mean, that's, that's a big plus. So, that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Notte.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I just want to say I thank Mayor Matt that you're back and you're with us, and we're grateful for that. Starting tomorrow night, Friday, January 13, there will be a jazz concert reception night, Friday, January 13th, there will be a jazz concert. Reception will start at 6:00 PM at the Longview Community Center. And then the jazz concert will follow at 7:00. The concert is by Mack, Geist, and band. So the opening performance is a saxophonist Low D. Admission is $10. Hope to see you guys there. Also Saturday, it's a full weekend of activities. Saturday, January 14th, the MLK Celebration Parade will start at 10:00 AM. Participants will gather at Pittman Street and parade will end at Foster Middle School. Saturday evening, January 14th at 6:30 PM, there will be the Annual Humanitarian Celebration at Parkview Baptist Church. The guest speaker was here. He gave us our prayer and pledge this morning. On Monday, January 16th, and really hope to see you guys out, the MLK March will be at 11:00 AM from Broughton Recreation Center to Mount Olive Baptist Church, which is 306 South MLK Boulevard. And then there will be a memorial service to follow. So hope to see you guys there. If not, Happy MLK Day.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty. Mr. Wade?
Yes, sir. I'm continuing with MLK Day weekend. There's a community festival Saturday, January 14th, 12:00 PM. There's a welcome and ribbon cutting for the newly renovated Broughton Recreation Center, beautiful facility. At, from 12 to 3 inside Broughton and around the park, there'll be food, vendors, music, and children activities. And continuing what Councilwoman Snotty mentioned, would love to have everyone to come out and support a really glorious time and see the beautiful Broughton Recreation Center. And I was a guest commentator for Longview Game Day and want to thank those guys for having me out. That's a football on there, but it was a basketball game that we did at Longview Coliseum. It was a great time. I didn't blunder, didn't mispronounce any words, had a lot of fun. So thank you to everyone at Longview Game Day. Partners in Prevention have a youth talent show coming up January 28th from 1 to 4. And it's with fifth through eighth grade students. Sounds like a lot of fun. I was in on their meeting yesterday. It's a good group of people, work in Partners in Prevention. And they're also having a lot of other great activities throughout the year. So please reach out to them and follow them on social media. Their social media page is really big. Okay, that's it for me, Mayor Mack.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Gamboa?
Mark your calendars. Spring Hill ISD will, well, good evening, everyone as well, and Happy New Year. But Spring Hill ISD will host Programs of Study Showcase on Monday, January 23rd at 7:00 PM at Spring Hill High School. This event will highlight programs of study and extracurricular activities available at Spring Hill High School. All students and parents are welcome to attend. Prior to the showcase, there will be an eighth grade parent meeting at 6:30 in the high school little theater. And please reach out to the Spring Hill ISD for more questions. Happy School Board Recognition Month. So thank you to all the school board members at LISD, Hallsville, Pine Tree, and Spring Hill, and all around Great East Texas for helping us mentor the minds of tomorrow. Thank you so much to all the citizens that have been reaching out. Thank you, Mr. Copeland, Ms. Baker, and everybody else for reporting beautification and other issues. I'd like to remind everybody as well that we have CitySend. So please, you know, download that on your iPhone or mobile device. Or my contact information is on the screen. If you have any issues, please feel free to contact me and I'll get you to the right place. Reminding everybody to please get your tickets for the Unity Honors Luncheon honoring two very deserving recipients, Ms. Vizi and Mr. Holmes. Thank you for your work in unifying our community. We really appreciate you. And Mr. Shirley and Southside Bank, thank you so much for helping put together this Hispanic Alliance Business Owners Workshop, teaching the Hispanic community more about our development services and how they can put in their requests to City Hall or all our other departments. Greatly appreciate it. Imagination Library with United Way. If you have any other questions, please go to their website. But if you are a Gregg County resident under five years old, you get a book every year for your birthday. So please make sure to check that out on their website. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Purtle.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Mcfee?
Nothing.
Okay. MLK Day, city office will be closed on Monday, January 16th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Sanitation, recycling are run on regular schedule. MLK, thank you. We'd love to have you join. It's the weekend for the events taking place to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. Day. It takes a lot of effort to put together a citywide celebration like this. So I especially want to thank the planning committee, event vendors, parade participants, and sponsors for their investment in our community. It is a huge event. I want you all to participate when you can. And thank you for all those that went into the planning and the organization of this event. It's such a great thing for our community. Homeless Resource Day. We still need supplies to pack homeless outreach bags for our Homeless Resource Outreach Day. We are particularly short on, you can see up on the screen, dog and cat food, razors, plastic forks and spoons, laundry detergent, diapers, baby wipes, formula, pet supplies, tampons, pads, toothbrushes, shampoo, canned foods, Band-Aids, deodorant, chapstick, hand sanitizer, and wet wipes. This is a vital service we offer every year and appreciate any way you can help. And I did verify with Ms. Hill, you can give donations and they will have shoppers that will go out and shop for these items that we need. So if you need a donation and would like to, would like to have a donation, call city offices, we'll pick it up, we'll bring it, we'll get it to you, and we'll do the shopping. So thank you very much for that. I just want to thank everybody for all your thoughts and prayers while I was out. I heard from most of you council members and I appreciate that very much. I can't begin to tell you the overwhelming response I received from City of Longview. The, it, it's, it's just beyond me how many people reached out. Parade, emails, cards, letters, phone calls, personal visits, texts. I can assure you, I got more well wishes than I ever got votes to win an election in this, in this city. I can promise you that. So it does my heart good to know that the City of Longview is so good about things like that. And what really struck me as I read each one of these well wishes for my health is that it, it reminded me of why I did this in the first place. Because I questioned that a lot while I was incapacitated for a few days. But it, it, it reinvigorated my purpose for being in this chair. When I ran seven and a half years ago, I ran on a very, very simple platform. I want Longview to be a better place. I want it to be a place where people want to come, kids want to come back, and people want to live here. Businesses want to thrive and come and, and be in our community. And that's what I ran on. And I realized now is not the time to sit back and stop with what I started. So many people have asked me to please continue where we're going. And, and I guarantee you, I plan to do just that. You know, we have a very diverse community. We have people that don't want to see change in this community, and I understand that. I don't agree with it, but I understand it because that's a different station in life. We have people that are naysayers that, are against everything that I say, and I don't agree with them either. But I understand that there are people that are going to be that way. But there are the majority of us in Longview who want to see progress and want to see us move forward and have things that make us a better community with more quality of life, with more things that make it fun to live in Longview and bring people to Longview. And that's what you elected me to do, and that's what I'm going to do. So I'm going to kindly ask you, naysayers, and you people who don't want to see change, to please close your eyes or back away because the City of Longview train is fixing to move forward at a very rapid pace. I've got 18 months left. I'm going to make every moment count. We're going to move forward. We're going to do what I plan to do from day one. And I appreciate your support in doing that. So with that said, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your thoughts, prayers, wishes. I love you all, and I love one Longview. God bless you all. We're adjourned.